I'd like to call this meeting in order of the Yankton Board of City Commissioners. Feel free to join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thanks everyone for coming. We'll have a roll call.
Sarda.
Here.
Burdick.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Knopf.
Here.
Mybaum.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Mayor Hoffner.
Here.
City Manager Nelson.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
We have a quorum, so we will continue to conduct business. The number two on routine business is the minutes from last meeting. What would you like to do?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of last meeting and also the work session on May 22nd. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call. Voice vote, please. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You have a schedule of bills in front of you? Let's pay them. So moved. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the bills? Anybody from the audience? All in favor say aye. Okay, roll call, please.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. We have a proclamation tonight for general aviation. Steve, would you come forward? This is a proclamation for general aviation appreciation month. Whereas general aviation and Changarney Airport play a critical role in the lives of our citizens, as well as in the operation of our businesses, and whereas the city of Yankton has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aerospace, aircraft, manufacturing, educational institutions, aviation organizations, public airports, and airport operations. And whereas Yankton has full-service airport, serving small and large aircraft, both private and corporate, and two aviation businesses, Crop Dusters LLC and Becker Flying Service, two general aviation support groups. Yankton Regional Aviation Association and the Yankton Experimental Aircraft Chapter 1029, and serving 43-based aircraft and facilitation of more than 7,700 general operation annually. Whereas general aviation contributes to the Yankton economy and medical care and boosts economic developments for Yankton and surrounding communities. And whereas from the 2010 State Aviation System Plan, general and commercial aviation at Yankton Changarney Airport supports nearly 4.6 million in business, including 1 million in personal income and more than 40 jobs, of which agricultural spraying supports nearly 2.2 million in business sales, including 328,000 in personal income and more than 10 jobs. And whereas general aviation is integral to the city's response to emergencies and natural disasters, as well as a key component of business at Changarney Airport. And whereas Yankton depends heavily on general aviation and the Changarney Airport for continued flow of commerce, tourists, and visitors to our city and state. Now therefore I, Jake Hoffner, Mayor of the City of Yankton, do hereby proclaim June 2017 as General Aviation Appreciation Month.
I'd like to make sure you're all invited for the third Sunday in September for the 20th Annual Airport Breakfast at Changarney Airport. And that's put on by the Yankton Regional Aviation Association. If you have kids between the age of eight and 17, we have Young Eagle programs, and we've flown over 3,000 kids since 1993. That's a free airplane ride. It got weathered out this last Saturday, as you read in today's PND, but there'll be another date for that, so we appreciate that. This is the first proclamation from the city of Yankton, and we're very fortunate to have that done. Our very first statewide proclamation was by Governor Rounds, and Governor Dugard signed the fifth annual proclamation from a statewide standpoint. So thank you very much, Yankton, and thank you, Mayor Hoffner.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Number five on routine business, City Manager's Board.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission, and mayor, members of the public. Just a couple items here, a reminder to the Commissioners and any public who's interested. Next Monday, June 19th, at 5:30, we will have a meeting, which we've already noticed with the press regarding our capital improvement budget and our BBB budget. So that'll be held at 5:30 at City Hall, on the second floor of City Hall, if anyone's interested in attending that. Also, we have, tonight on your consent, we have a notice of a public hear- or notice of a possible quorum for the Agricultural Gala in cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce. But we've also reserved the 20th for an additional budget meeting if we should need to talk later on into the evening and want to split the days and go the next day. So it depends upon how eager you are to get to the gala, I guess, and whether or not you want to take two days or just one. So that is right now scheduled in lieu of a work session on the 26th. We'll still have regular meeting on the 26th. Unless any of you are excited about having a work session, we can also do that. But hearing none of that, we'll just plan for the 19th and work on the budget. Our contractor at the water treatment plant, John C. Jones Construction, has requested permission to work evenings and Saturdays for the next couple of weeks. Kyle has listened to the type of work that they're going to be doing. He feels that there's a method that they can perform that work without a lot of noise. So we're inclined to allow that until we have a lot of complaints or if there's some disruption in the neighborhood. So it'd just be a couple Saturdays. We'd ask that they not get it started as early on Saturday mornings as the weekdays and that they finish during the weekdays around 7:00 PM and shut down Saturday around 5:00, and again, no work on Sunday. So we think that's acceptable. We have good weather and a contractor that wants to work, so we're inclined to let them do that. But if you have any comments or don't want them to allow that, we are the owners.
Do they anticipate that'll put them ahead of schedule at all, or is this to kind of heat?
They haven't said that. And I think it's a long enough project where we could get ahead for a while and then could be behind. And so I think what they do is they have a crew onsite that's willing to work and wants to put as many hours in as they can, so.
Any more questions for Manager Nelson? From the audience? Okay, this is a time and place for anybody from the public would like to be on the agenda. We'd like to make sure we keep it open for anybody that wants to come forward. If that item is not on the agenda, please step forward. State your name, please, for the public.
My name's Cole Blum. I wanted to talk about the flooding on Sixth Street, Sixth and Locust, where I live. On May 20th, my basement was flooded. My wife first noticed water running down the street at- down Sixth Street at 12:30. At 2:30, she got a call from a neighbor saying their basement was flooded and that we should check ours. When we checked ours, there was about eight inches of water that was coming up through the sewer into our basement. It took two pumps and about an hour for us to be able to start removing the water. And at 3:30, the water started going back down the drain. And then we were able to start actually cleaning up our home. Around 5 o'clock, a city employee came and gave us an insurance notice to let us know what insurance to contact. We called them and left a message, and they got back to us on Monday and sent over an adjuster that got there on Tuesday. We met with the adjuster, and at no point did the adjuster nor the insurance agency ever inform us that we needed to fill out a claim form or do anything else. Someone else came by and let us know that we do need to fill out a claim form and actually file it before anything can proceed. My wife and I have both inquired several times with the city insurance and called and left messages for the adjuster. At this point, we still have never received a reply from the adjuster, and we haven't gotten any results from the city insurance. I also contacted Amy Nelson, and she has been very helpful in trying to keep me informed to what information she has. During the cleanup of our flood in our basement, we had 11 people help us for a combined 79 hours of work to be able to get our basement cleaned up, as well as having floor tech come in and clean our basement. My children were displaced from our home for 24 hours, and I also had to miss work. As of right now, I currently have $14,299 in damages. And that's before cost of replacing my carpet, tile, and drywall. It's my understanding that the water main had been leaking for quite some time, and they had located it and scheduled it to be repaired the following Monday. I would like to have answers from the insurance to be able to know what is going on. And I also would like to know if this needs to be a further concern for us since none of the other water mains have been replaced anytime recently, and if it's going to be an ongoing problem for us. Thank you very much for your time.
So Kyle, if you maybe want to come to the podium and help me out here, I'll see what I can do to fill in a few of the blanks, and maybe Kyle can help me. Kyle Goodmanson is our Director of Environmental Services and has informed me that that main has been repaired, correct?
The main has been repaired. What he was referring to is the leak that was prior to that is up the hill farther at a private residence, there was a service line that had been leaking. The homeowner had been notified that he had to repair it. We gave him so much time to repair it. He was scheduled to repair that Monday. This was the actual water main that broke about a half-block away from there, down the hill. So it was a separate incident, so.
And we do have a schedule for water main replacement all over town. That's based on age, or if we do a street project, that's a good time to replace a water main. Ken and Do Water mains break before they get replaced at times, yes. Sometimes that's age, and sometimes that's circumstances out of the control of us, weather, or freeze thaw cycles, things like of that nature. But we do have a schedule for repair and replacement, which we can share with you as well. And as we talked this afternoon, as soon as I have updates, and I've got flagged on my calendar now to contact the insurance on a regular basis, so I can give you guys a little ideas to when. Because I know Ken won't quit bothering me until I- if I don't give him answers. But so as soon as we know dates, we'll give them to you. We did get a request from the insurance adjuster today regarding some timeline on our part. So they request some phone information as to when calls went out, when people received calls, when staff was called out, et cetera. And so we contacted Verizon today to get that from our staff phones. And as soon as that is given to us, we'll get it to the adjuster. So there'll still be a little bit of time left, and I realize that that's not so helpful to you all when you have bills coming in and things to replace. That's the information I know, and certainly will continue to share information as I know it. So unless there's other direction from the Commission or the city attorney?
I'd just like to add, when things like this happen and it's turned over to the insurance adjuster, we are largely at their mercy to move these along. There's only so much we can do. As part of the insurance contract, we're obligated to turn over responsibility for the claim to them. And if things go to a point where no one's satisfied and ends up in court, they do the lawyering, and they basically take us along for the ride. So we may be helpful in terms of getting you the information that you're trying to get and get somebody to call you back, but in terms of bringing this to a conclusion, it's sort of largely out of our hands, so. I apologize for that.
Anybody else? Yeah, sorry for your problems, but hopefully we can move forward in a realistically fast manner. I understand your concerns, though. Thanks for coming. Anybody else for public appearances? All right, we'll move on to the consent items. And if it's okay, if there's no objections, we can take one separately and then two through five, unless there's some objections from anyone. Because two through five is-
Two through five or six.
Okay.
No objection.
All right. Okay, number one under consent items, Dance License Memorandum 17-131.
Move the memorandum.
Second. Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion in regards to 17-131? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number two through five. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Number two through five on consent.
Is there a reason we're not doing? I have six on my-
Yeah, that's just going to be an announcement for a quorum.
Oh, okay.
Anybody from the audience in regards to memorandums two through five, or consent items two through five? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number six is basically an announcement for a quorum, a possible quorum, at the Chamber Ag Gala on June 20th. And I believe we announced earlier that that's a possible backup date for our budget meetings as well, and that's been announced, I believe, to the public?
It was, yes.
Okay. Old business. Number one, public hearing, this is the time and place for a public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverage special event. Now, we have the first seven were carried over, obviously, from consent. And we can, if there's no objections, we can combine those. They're all the same thing, Brittany, correct, except for the dates? For the music on the meridian, is that right? Any objections?
I would move that we do that.
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye of the to do it? Opposed? Motion carried. Have the motion to do it. All right, number one through seven, what's your pleasure on those?
Memorandums from items number one through seven on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Any clarification? Please raise your hand. Roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number eight. This is a public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverages special event for the Chamber of Commerce, Memorandum 17-128. What's your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Epstein.
Gross.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number nine, under old business, is the public hearing for sale of alcoholic beverages and other special event for June 20th, Memorandum 17-129.
I'll move the memorandum. I will second Dave's motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? Roll call, please.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Epstein.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Epstein.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number 10, another special event, Memorandum 17-130. Or a special event for malt beverage license, July, is that the third on third, I believe? What would you like to do?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? Roll call, please.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Epstein again.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number 11 under old business is a public hearing for the vehicle for higher ordinance. Number 995. Do you want to have some discussion first?
I think City Attorney Denherter is going to explain a little bit what the changes are, and we may have some public comment.
All right, so the purpose for this particular change, or addition in this case, is to address the issue where a licensed taxicab service adds additional vehicles to their fleet or additional drivers throughout the course of the year. What we were having trouble with was companies that were getting set up, and they were, the applications were filed under someone else's name and then sort of just turned over because they were licensed. And it was sort of an abuse of the process, and this is an opportunity for us to just close loopholes with the idea of getting things in order and ready for a company like Liberty, for instance, that would have kind of fungible drivers and vehicles to make sure that everybody goes through the process. That's it.
Any questions? Anybody from the audience in regards to this? Want to speak first?
Mayor, I think we have one individual who'd like to talk a little bit about this ordinance in regards to how it'll impact her future coordination with some transportation activities in Yankton.
My name is Kate Schramm, and I'm the area manager for Liberty Mobility. I just wanted to say that we've been, I've discussed this ordinance with Ross and with Amy and with Valerie at Liberty, and we're all in favor of registering each individual vehicle. So I'm going to make sure that I have all the paperwork straight and understand what each driver needs to do to be in compliance with the city ordinance. And they're going to go through the forms with me. Ross and Sue at the city will go through the forms with me and make sure that every driver, that I know, so that I can train every driver, and we'll just sort of filter it through me so that there's a better streamlined process of getting that all set up.
Thank you. Anybody else? What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody else from the audience? Roll call, please.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf. Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. We'll move on to new business. Number one, NFAA requests for funding consideration, Memorandum 17-132. Would you guys want to hear some comments from the audience first? Or you guys want to have any questions first?
I can let the Commission know what I know. We have a request from NFAA for some funding for support of their next World Indoor Tournament, and I'm sure we'll hear from them regarding potential impact and purpose of the funding. But you'll recall that in past years, we've supported NFAA a number of ways, both monetarily, and we've worked on some construction projects with them, as well as worked with them on some economic development ventures, and also attending and participate, well, not participating, attending and supporting, promoting our community at the Vegas Shoot. None of us participated, thank goodness, because those are all people that know what they're doing. So I'm sure Nancy Lynn Andy has a few comments and may want to visit with you.
Yeah, come on forward, Nancy, and enlighten us.
Actually, I'm just playing secretary this evening. Bruce Cole will be presenting to you.
All right, first of all, thanks for the opportunity to be here again. You've done some great support for us in the past, as Amy mentioned. And the big thing I want to do, you're getting the magazine, which we have, of course, and you're getting a breakdown that we just worked on and just got finished with that shows the economic impact of this event. And you'll notice that we've compared the last one we had, which most of you, I think, were here and either volunteered or helped with. The big thing that I want to, I don't have a lot to pitch with you. I think that what we've done probably speaks for itself. But the one thing that I really want to mention, it goes back to the days, and in fact, Amy wrote a letter on behalf of the city, you know, showing the support like she mentioned. But the real issue that we have and why we ask for money is real simple. These tournaments that we're hosting in Yankton are really only here for one reason. That's what it started as, and that was because of the facility we had. It seems almost ludicrous for me to mention this, but the bidder that we had that bid against us for the World Indoor was Rome. And basically, what I'm trying to tell you is that all of these world tournaments, with the exception of Yankton, have been held in huge cities. And I can't give you particulars, I don't know them to the penny, but I can bullet point them, kind of in an umbrella fashion, to tell you. The city of Rome and the country got together in their sports tourism, basically said, when we have these tournaments, whether it be a World Indoor, World Outdoor, whatever they happen to be, you know, we put up X number of dollars. Well, we negotiated with World Archery simply because they know what we did with the youth world, and they like it, they love the community. I think, you know, if you look through all the stuff that we have, I don't even need to go back through the 900 volunteers and everything that happened. It was, we all know what that was. It was great. But the bidding process to get these, we're basically bidding what we're asking for now. The first one we had, which was the youth world, we bid against Mexico City, a city of 23 million. We were awarded the bid. That was a legitimate bid against it. They put up the $265,000, the country did, to host the tournament. Well, basically, if I came to you and said, I need $265,000, you'd all laugh me out of the door. So we came up with a way to figure out some way to fundraise. I worked with Nancy, several of our people that are now on staff with us, and we've expanded even more. Nancy was the perfect choice, having been in your seats before and been involved with the city. And we went out and did a fundraising campaign and came up with the money. Of course, nobody's going to assume what you gave us before is what you'll give us now. I assume you're going to give us more, but we'll just leave it there. But that's actually what we have to do. So we have to somehow raise the money. You know, every other city puts up bonds, or the countries do. They're literally doing this on our word. And, you know, several of you here have been involved with that Olympic body. I'm not going to name names, but we've taken them all over the city and hosted them and wined them and dined them, and they love everything about Yankton. And I think you've all met that, and you've seen that. And I think you've all met that and you've seen that from the coverage that we've had. But that's the big obstacle that we run up against because, you know, occasionally I know you're faced with, you know, do we give this person that or that person that? Well, it's really, in my opinion, that's why I'm trying to explain this to you, it's not really a comparison to anything that we've got. You know, it's hard to compare that. So that's one of the advantages, you know? If we ever fall on our face, we have somebody that will help us out a little bit, but they won't bail us out to the two and a quarter of a million. So that's why we're doing such a, you know, a big fundraising effort and we've relied on your support and we'd like to have it again. If you, Nancy, I may have to call on you to explain some of that, but I know the big picture that we just, and Casey from the CVB and Nancy were working today with Kurt Holstein with the Department of Tourism, trying to get real good figures. You know, some of the things I can tell you on the youth world, we had a half a million dollars that we paid in town, 300 and some thousand just to hotels. I personally took those checks around, you know, 100 and some thousand for meals. You know, the money stays in here, obviously. And then we had some local transportation. Those are just the big ones. That doesn't take into consideration all the little stuff. When you look at the actual numbers from the, who's it from, the US?
Department of Commerce.
Department of Commerce. That's what you're looking at in front of you. You know, so you're looking at a couple million dollars that's basically, you know, justified and almost proven. If anything, I think Kurt made the comment that those are conservative, did he not? So, you know, I think we spent more money. I think if you actually saw what these people do here, if you didn't go to a Walmart run during the, all those kids being here, I mean, you, yeah, I think most of you know it, so I think you see the economic, the benefit. But if you have any questions over those, either myself or Nancy can answer them. But once again, you know, thanks for hearing us. Your support is huge. The amount that we asked for was $40,000. The justification for that, where we came up with it, was at the last world tournament, you gave us 25,000 in cash and a whole lot of trade out in, you know, basically staff and that type of thing. This tournament, by the way, two things I did miss if you didn't catch it. This tournament is in February. So as you can imagine, almost every retailer in town is like jumping for joy because there's a pretty good chance the weather's not going to be great and they're going to be in town, they're not going to leave. And that time of the year, we don't have a lot of business anyhow. So great shoulder season time for that. The second part of that is that in the outdoor tournament, I don't think, unless Amy, you have a figure, we just estimated that the amount of work you did with grounds crews and parks and rec people and all that other stuff was a lot of money. And this one, you know, we really need the money more than anything and I don't foresee a big problem with needing a lot of city, you know, help with that barring a six-foot snow or something that we may have to get buses around. But that's pretty much, Nancy, do you have anything to add?
Not unless they have any questions.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I just want to make sure, and this is not the youth, this will be adult?
Yes, this is, there are youth at this, but it's predominantly, we estimated 60%. Brittany, do you remember the number in Turkey of adult versus kid? I think it was 70, 80 adult, 20, 30% kids. Every country can qualify a team up to 24 shooters and then all their other staff. And of the 24, six of those can be juniors or under 18.
My recollection too is with the youth, a lot of them came, they didn't have their families with them, correct? Didn't they come?
Yep.
Like as a team, there might be one or two chaperones. So, you know, I'm thinking maybe there's actually more folks that are, have a reason to go around town versus?
Very definitely.
Kids, you know, aren't going to be so much.
And even our transportation needs, we're going to see, we haven't got into that completely, but as you well know, the last one was handholding from the time they hit the airport to the time they left. I mean, we couldn't let them out of our sight or the athlete trainers or chaperones or whoever. This one, they actually can rent their own vehicles, which some people will do, just so they have the ability, you know, to get around. So there's going to be a lot more of that. The other thing that we're doing, we came up with the idea, just as an example of how creative we got with this, the meals. You know, one thing a lot of people don't realize, it's very difficult to feed this kind of people, this number of people at one time. And we used Aviance Mount Marty's caterers to do that, which works out great for that middle meal or the noon meal. This tournament, we still have to provide a noon meal. And of course, we get bids from everybody in town that can cater, but the evening meal, we're turning everybody loose and giving them coupons to use at all the retailers in town or all the restaurants in town. So that's going to be a huge impact that'll get out there that we didn't have last time. So that's kind of another part of that, being the adult.
Bruce, you might have said this, but are there two tournaments you have coming up? Is there 2018, then is there another one 2018 or 2019?
We actually, right now, have a 2018, 19, and 20. And they're all different disciplines and they're all different sizes. The next one that compares to this one will be 2020. And that one's actually in, yeah, the end of September. Again, we got it off, you know, the Memorial Day to Labor Day time period, so. And that one's an outdoor event, which has a potential to be the biggest of all these that we've had, so.
Bruce, explain the length of this tournament compared to the last big one?
It's exactly the same. The dates that we have, the tournament dates, the 14th to the 19th of February, they come in on the 12th, actually, they can come in earlier, but the 12th through the 20th would be the nights that they're here. And one thing, you know, a lot of you have been to our Vegas shoot. One thing we did this year, and it kind of goes along with what you asked, we've made, we're making a special package for all these countries to come to Vegas, which is the world's biggest of anything, and actually use that as a practice event and then fly into Yankton or Sioux Falls. We're right now in the process of checking on a lot of different private charters and how to get them here, but that's going to be a huge thing for those countries because they can use three or four days there. So they may even be here a couple days earlier. And I think the numbers are going to go up too, so.
My question maybe is for Amy. Being a 2018 event, is there a reason why this hasn't gone through the budgeting process for 2018?
I don't know that we knew when it was awarded yet or was it awarded yet at budget time, I'm not sure.
I don't know when your budget is, but I think if what you're going to ask is like when we would need this, we would like to have it today, but we could deal with getting it as late as the tournament. So February of 18, we could.
Yeah. There is, there will be a request on, for upcoming years in our budget, in our capital budget, we'll talk about next week from NFA as well for future tournaments. But because this one is beginning of the year, wanted to make that request a bit earlier.
But it's not out of line to include it into our budget talk for next year if we wanted to do that?
If that's what pleases the commission.
I believe it will be on our agenda next week anyway, won't it, depending upon what we do?
We are talking about the triple B request next week, correct?
Any other question?
Yeah, in regards to the $40,000 figure, can you tell me between promotion, marketing, just pinpoint for me what would be considered the biggest expense out of that 40,000? What in particular is the biggest?
Actually, we just talked about, and I'm glad you asked that question. The 40,000 would go to nothing more than host fees. That's what we have to pay to just have the tournaments. And what that means is, I don't have the exact breakdown, but it costs about 60 grand to pay World Archery for the right to have the tournament and to pay their staff, which have to come to the tournament. So really, it would all go to that. That's kind of our, and that's what they asked for upfront, that they let us get by with, you know, that's why I say we can actually wait. But technically speaking, you know, out of our, what's our whole, 200 and some thousand? Is that what the budget number is for raising? 300,000, okay. Out of that whole thing, I mean, obviously, we pay where we have to. And the least we do is the marketing because that marketing we do kind of internally. So it's, we call everything marketing and promotion for the tournament, if that makes any sense. I mean, the breakdown we have, you know, is more detailed, but there's several things that we have to pay for even before it starts and that's one of the big ones.
Can I just add a comment to that? As a part of the relationship that we have with World Archery, they do a lot of promotion for this tournament for us. We send them information and they contact the 160 federations and get them the information and work with them to get registered for tournaments like this. So they do a lot of the promotion for that, as well as their staff are the ones that do the televising so that it is seen all over the world and on the YouTube Archery channel and all of those things where they get the views that go along with it. So that's included in the partnership that we have with World Archery.
Is it, is it safe to say that for nine days, every hotel room in town is going to be booked?
Yeah. Yep. And not just in town. You know, I think most of the, Nancy, you may have to answer this too, but I think most of the hotels, Dave, have kept some rooms. They haven't given us 100% for their regular business travelers or whatever they have. Is that not correct for some of them?
It's varied. Some of the hotels that we had used last time had held more rooms back and now that they understand how the registration process works and that there aren't just usually drop-in families that come to this event, they plan far enough and all the athletes are required to stay at one of the facilities that is included in the registration process. So yes, we are using all the rooms that we can. Last, in the 2015 tournament, we had utilized Mount Marty College, which with it being February is not available this time. So that was 107 beds that we don't have access to because we do a bed count rather than a room count. And so we were searching out other alternatives and Broomtree is one of the properties that we're taking a look at. That's a little further out than we had used before, but if you take a look at Broomtree or places in Vermillion, they're about the same distance as the lodge out at Lewis and Clark Resort. So we're just trying to get creative to make sure we can find housing for everyone.
So I guess Al or Amy, would there be a way to take the economic impact and determine what we would get out of the triple B out of that, $2.3 million? You know, we get a lot of requests like this and you're trying to determine if you're getting your money's worth, I guess, of our input. Is there a way to use that economic impact and get what we would get out of that from the triple B tax?
Well, I can extrapolate what 1% of it'd be, you know, that's if it was all BBB. Right. We'd get 1%. And that would be about 2 million, 234 million, is it? 2,300,000. So it'd be about 23,000, $23,040.
I guess I would recommend that we table this until after the budget discussion on triple B.
Second that. Motion to table and seconded. Any other discussion as far as tabling it?
I was wondering if there was, we're tabling it until the 19th or is that included in the motion or we're just tabling it? I don't know.
Want to read the motion back?
I would table this item until after the budget, but then bring it forward at another commission meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So I understand, we're not going to discuss it at the 19th? Or we will discuss it on the 19th, but then it'll just come on the agenda after?
Correct. I think it'd just be part of the triple B discussion, but it would be a future agenda.
I just want to make sure we're discussing it next week, so, okay.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Sarda.
Aye.
Furtig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Mayor Hopper.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to number two, under new business, request for camping to be held in Memorial Park memorandum seventeen dash one three five. Like the motion or discuss it first?
I will move the memorandum.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Jesse?
Say a quick spiel. My name is Jesse Bailey. I'm the executive director of Pathway Shelter for the Homeless. In 2015, Pathway served 105 unduplicated individuals. In 2016, Pathway served 275 unduplicated individuals. And so far this year, we are at 137 unduplicated individuals. So it's clear that homelessness is an issue in Yankton and surrounding areas, but many people do not know that homelessness exists in our area. The Cardboard City, we are requesting to hold, not necessarily camping, there will be no fires. It will, beyond August 11th to 12th, will serve two purposes for Pathways. It'll serve as a fundraiser for our organization, but most importantly, it'll bring awareness to the issue of homelessness in our community and the surrounding areas. We'll raise this awareness by having statistics, information regarding homelessness on signage throughout the park and hopefully having at least 100 people participate in the event by staying overnight in a cardboard house. We'd like the majority of the event to take place where it can be seen from Douglas Avenue, where most of the traffic is held or most of the traffic goes by. In 2016, the National Honor Society students held this event. And this year, we are solely responsible for it and we're hoping the city will support us in our efforts to raise awareness about homelessness in Yankton and surrounding communities and therefore hopefully eradicating homelessness altogether at one point in time. So any questions about the event, I'm happy to answer them, but thanks for your time.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Furtig.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Mayor Hopper.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to number three, under new business, a bid award for seventeen dash one three six.
Move the memorandum?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question. Do you know that, what's the distinction between transport versus tank wagon? Just because I noticed, one, they all end up on transport and all go down on tank wagon.
I'll let our public books chapter into that.
So the transport's like a fifth wheel tanker and the tank wagon's a smaller truck that delivers hundreds of gallons versus thousands of gallons?
Is there a reason why we only receive one bid or just?
You know, in my time with handling the fuel bids, it's different every year. One year, we have people knocking down the door for bid requests. The next year, there's not much interest. Not sure the rhyme or reason to that, but.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Furtig.
Aye.
Mayor Hopper.
Aye. Motion carried. Last item under new business, number four, for the memorandum seventeen dash one three three for a COPs grant. Amy, you want to?
Sure. Honorable mayor, members of the commission, there has been a release of the COPs grants, which is community oriented policing grants. Those are for salaries and benefits associated with patrol officers. I've been in discussions with Chief Paulson as well as with the school district. And as you all know, we currently have a part-time school resource officer and I talked with both Dr. Kindle and Dr. Johnkey about turning that position into a full-time position, as well as many of you know that we have one squad that is one officer lower than the others. And to round off that squad with an additional officer has always been, has been a long-term goal of the department and of mine so that we make sure we have ample coverage and we have people on vacation, et cetera. We won't be able to do this within our budget without grant assistance. others and to round off that squad with an additional officer has always been, has been a long-term goal of the department and of mine so that we make sure we have ample coverage and we have people on vacation, et cetera. We won't be able to do this within our budget without grant assistance. So, you know, it's up in the air as to whether or not we'll be successful, but we'd like the authorization to apply for two officers, two officer positions. They've changed the structure of the grant slightly. They used to be graduated grants that were, first year they paid for 75% of salaries and wages, second year 50, third year 25. It now appears that they will pay up to 75% of salaries and wages for three years with the cap of $125,000 per officer, which we wouldn't come near that, of course. So we're looking, I'm looking for your authorization to apply and we'll probably have District Three help us with that. And again, we'll have to look at our budget long-term as well about absorbing that if we are successful in having one or two officers. Our current situation with our SRO is we've got a really good deal and a really good officer. Sergeant, or excuse me, Dan Thompson was with the State Highway Patrol for many years, retired and is working with us as our school resource officer. We want him to continue to do that as long as he wants to, but I know that he's got some plans in his future too and I'm not exactly sure when that's going to be, but we want to make sure that we have an officer in the school at all times and maybe can grow that program in the future too. So I'm happy to answer questions, but I, we just got notice of the grant and we don't have it written yet, so I can't provide you the application and the details as of yet, but we'll do so if approved to apply.
So I understand, and after three years then, it's our responsibility to pay the salary, so hopefully the budget.
It is, so we look at ways to accommodate that in the department over time, although I don't believe you're obliged to keep, you know, you can furlough or downsize your department if you're not able to continue with that. Of course, that wouldn't be our goal. Our goal would be to continue funding those positions. I think Dr. Kindle and those involved with the school resource program would say certainly that isn't a program that we ever want to step away from and not have in the schools anymore. I think it's been really beneficial, both to the students and to the administration and to the community because we get useful information as well and do a better job policing all of our citizens when we're in touch with the young people in our community and that's at least the impression I've gotten from the police department. Also, you know, I've kicked around the question of, you know, do we need more patrol officers? And patrol officers are not like us that are in City Hall from eight to five and have occasional night meeting. Now, that's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation and we have a lot of folks that have a lot of tenure on the department, so they have vacation and sometimes they get sick and sometimes they have family things come up. And so to have that flexibility of having the full squads, you know, gives them more flexibility and helps us better patrol and do all the other things, the good things that they do. So that's kind of the reasoning behind the program.
I have a question. You had mentioned that if we receive the grant, we can get up to 75% for three years, correct?
Correct.
Do we have a plan then for how we pay the difference of what doesn't come through that grant?
Yes, we'll be cutting it from somewhere else is the plan right now unless something changes with sales tax, but I think we'll be able to do that. You know, one of the, it could be up to 75, you know, and if they're only able to pay up to 50% of one or two positions, we'll have to make that decision based on what we're willing to be flexible with or that you're willing to be flexible with in the operating budget. One good, you know, I guess one good thing is that they generally tend to, as new hires, start out with less experience or no experience and we're able then to hire them at the starting point of the range, so that is beneficial.
Any other questions?
Move the memorandum to allow the city manager to go for the grant.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kinnock.
Aye.
Mibon.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Furtick.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Mayor Hopper.
Aye. Motion carried. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss legal personnel and contractual matters under South Dakota Code of Law one dash 25 dash two.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.[1800.12]